July 12th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Regular Board Meeting for Winfield Township Board of Trustees. Okay, Bessie, when you're ready, go ahead and do roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Volz?
Here.
Trustee Alenka?
Here.
Elekna.
Elekna, I'm sorry. Trustee Lucas?
Here.
And Trustee Hacker?
Here.
And Supervisor Prater?
Here.
Excellent. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Review and approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting held on June 14th, 2021. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Motion by our seconded by Trustee Volz. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion? Please call roll.
Trustee Hacker?
Aye.
Trustee Alenka?
Elekna.
Elekna.
Sorry.
Aye. Trustee Lucas?
Aye.
And Trustee Volz?
Aye.
And Supervisor Prater?
Aye.
Motion passes. Review of the board minutes from the Road District Budget Hearing from May 10th, 2021. I'll make a motion. Motion by Trustee Elekna?
I don't think I was here for that. Was I?
You weren't a board member.
No. No. Yeah, abstained or whatever.
Seconded by Trustee Volz.
And?
Any discussion? No? Please call roll.
Trustee, Trustee... Elekna. Why am I all of a sudden?
You got it, Annie.
You got it.
I get, yeah, aye. And Trustee Lucas?
Abstain.
And Trustee Volz?
Aye.
And Trustee Hacker?
Abstain.
And Trustee, Supervisor Prater?
No problem. Aye. Motion passes. Approval, review and approval of the minutes from the town budget hearing on May 10th, 2021. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Volz. Any discussion?
Uh, did that involve attorney bills for the lawsuit and all that other stuff? That budget? Is that all part of that?
No.
Okay.
Either way, you were present.
I wasn't here. Well, I don't want to say no to that one.
Yeah, exactly. You weren't here. So, any further discussion? Please call roll.
Trustee Lucas?
Abstain.
Trustee Volz?
Aye.
Trustee Hacker?
Abstain.
Trustee Alenka?
Aye. I have a...
That's okay. And? Aye. Supervisor Prater?
Supervisor Prater.
Motion passes. Review and approval of special meeting minutes from May 17th, 2021. Present, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Lucas. Any discussion?
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Oh, okay.
I was just around.
Uh, please call roll.
Trustee Volz?
Aye.
Trustee Hacker?
Aye.
Trustee? Elekna?
Yeah!
I'm so sorry. Trustee Lucas?
Aye.
Supervisor? Prater.
Prater. Yeah, aye. There we go. It's okay. You can screw my...
Do you see that?
Yeah. Audience participation. Anyone would like to?
Yes. Hi.
Hi. If you could just state your name and...
Sure. My name is Mallory.
Sure.
And I live in unincorporated West Chicago, out there in Winfield Township.
DuPage Highlands.
DuPage Highlands, where the new park just went in. Um, we're here to be a voice for the speeding that is out of control in that subdivision. Um, I live off of center and basically between Hickory and James. Um, we've printed out a map to show how many kids families have throughout the subdivision. Um, we, there was actually an altercation last week or two weeks ago where we called the sheriffs because the speeding was out of control and we motioned for somebody to slow down. They pulled over, felt the need to jump out, yelled obscenities at us. Um, there are way too many kids in the subdivision and now that the new park is going and everyone's on foot, kids are riding their bike to the park. It's close enough, they can kind of just go. And we don't know where to begin, so this is kind of where we're coming. We figured this is the best place to start getting us on record that we need, whether it be a stop sign at the corner, the slowdown signs, I don't think do anything. We all have them in the front, you know, with the little pedestrian with the flag, you know, we all have them. Um, I don't know if any of you guys actually want this. We've printed out a map of the aerial showing how many kids. I haven't actually totaled it. I think we're 38 kids in the whole subdivision, maybe 40 kids. Um, I have four myself. I think the, she's got two, you have two, the name, like, um, I think the oldest person that has children, I think it's like 10 maybe, somewhere in that, the oldest child. They're all so young. Someone's gonna get hit by a car. And it's gonna be devastating. And we're just here to kind of voice that we need help getting something done in the subdivision. I don't know where to start, what to call it. Stop sign, speed bump, slowdown, something. That's why we're here. Um, that we, we all kind of came together just to be a voice, so that it's known.
Please make sure you leave your name.
Absolutely.
Phone number.
Sure.
Email.
Yeah. 61? Yeah, and we might be missing a kid or two. There are 61 kids in three blocks.
And we have the little kids?
Yeah.
There are some grade school, high school that we aren't even accounting for.
Yeah, this is, this is just kids, like I said, probably under 10 or 12. Yeah, so we're just, we need to get something started 'cause I would hate for anybody to be injured or worst case scenario, something. Someone's gonna be killed out there. I hate to say it. Um, so that's what brought us here.
Thank you, Mallory.
Cool.
Wait, wait, wait. Sean, Sean, unfortunately, and I'm, I apologize.
Okay.
But unfortunately during comments, we just take the comment?
Sure.
Well, we can't really comment on it at all.
That's okay.
So I apologize for that.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
No. No. So that's why I asked, send your email, phone number, name.
Absolutely, I'll make sure.
Because it might not be our jurisdiction, but we can point her in the proper direction of where to go.
That'd be great.
Jurisdiction as well, our township?
Correct.
It's our, it's our township. She's my neighbor.
Sean, understood. I understand what you're saying, however, it's not our, it might not be our jurisdiction. I understand what I'm trying to tell you.
Not yet.
Another, another...
Each other five minutes, right?
Correct. Each person, yes.
Yeah, I did my...
I just started.
No, 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 it's okay.
So, I too live here. And there's been some rumors...
Can you state your name?
Oh, yes, certainly. Jordana Perry.
Jordana. Thank you.
Um, there's been some rumors going around, flying around that, um, we're trying to be incorporated. Don't know how true those are or aren't. Um, I was told by the guys that we're out fixing some of the grass and putting in the culverts that they're gonna be expanding the rows. With that, I don't know if this was just chitter chatter of talk of incorporation or not. I don't know where we find these rumors out to be true or not be true or anything. But we are new to the subdivision, which was in December.
Welcome.
Just, thank you. Just from being in December, excuse me, sweetheart. We've met some amazing people. We have a, in our three block radius, we have a phenomenal group. And like she stated before, we're just looking out for each other. Yeah, so. The streets are so narrow out there, and even though there's no parking, I'm sorry.
No.
Even though there's no parking in the park, and it's, it's okay, but when there's kids and then people speeding by, it's, you know, it's, it's nerve wracking. And you can only tell a little one so many times, kids don't pay. And I hate to say it, kids don't pay attention. They're on their bikes, they're too busy watching their friends. And so we just want to be a voice to get started. So, yes, I will leave, make sure my email and phone number are included with my address. And please, if it's not you guys, tell us where to go, so we can keep the ball rolling in the right direction. Absolutely. Where do we clarify rumors or chitter chatter?
Leave your name, address.
Yep. Okay.
Email.
Add it to that list when we're on.
Well, our email.
Make sure the email and the phone number go on there. And that's, that's all we're here for. We won't...
Thank you.
Do you have anything? We won't keep up any more of the time. We just want it stated that, you know, what we're working on, so. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, if you want to put your info, and I'll sneak him out, and I'll add mine in just a minute here.
Excellent.
Awesome. Thank you.
Moving on. Do you want...
Can we get a copy of that, please? Am I allowed to have some?
Do you want this? Is this?
We'll leave it.
Okay, we, we don't need it. We have... Perfect. Thank you. I'll sneak him out.
Can we make a copy of that after me? And then, correspondence, I don't have any at this time. I don't have any from John or Mark either. Um, review and approval of board audit reports. Does he have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Motioned by Trustee Elekna.
You okay there, Danny?
Oh, I was just waiting to see. She just couldn't... Give me a second.
Seconded by Trustee Volz. Any discussion?
All right, so this is, this is our expenses, and it's from just in this last month.
Correct.
And I've been looking at that.
Correct.
Okay. You know, I do not know, and I saw you writing a lot of checks and everything. I, how am I, I, my, I guess my discussion is how am I supposed to make like an educated decision on this when I don't know anything about it?
Talk to me. What do you want to know?
Well, I, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. You know what I mean? I mean, we can just, you know, I can, I don't know what to ask, 'cause I don't know what I don't know.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
No. It doesn't.
Well, in other words, I, I, 'cause I saw, I saw Dan, you know, writing all checks and everything, but so, you know...
This is basically, every month you're gonna be getting this.
Okay.
Okay, these are the, and every month they're pretty much, these are the bills we pay out every month.
Okay.
Okay, so you got the Daily Herald, you got ComEd, Night Court, so these are bills that we're gonna be, we pay out.
Paychecks.
Okay.
And chances are, the only one that made change out of this is the legal services. That's probably, hopefully, tonight will be gone. Uh, but most, and, uh, some of these are only paid like quarterly, every three months or something. But this is basically, uh, the billing like you would get in your house, you know, basically. So if you get something, you know, that, that's all, basically, all these are. You've got the salaries on here, all the, all the salaries, you have, uh, I think the...
We did a lot of the WES and stuff like that this time around, a lot of the children's center, paid at the children's center, like the first half. Um, the veterans, uh, Midwest Shelter for Veterans, we did half of their payment. Uh, Youth and Family Services, we did half of their payment this time around. Citizens Corp, we did their full payment this time around. Um...
Are those people we contract with? Is that how?
Those are people that we budgeted to give money to.
Or we just donate to them?
Correct. Yes.
Or like a P per fee, or is it?
We at Winfield Township says we are going to give you this much out of our budget for this year.
Okay, that's what we're confused. We don't understand. You know, like, if we, if, like, usually when you start in a new corporation, they take you by the hand and say, here's the male partner, all right, here's your boss.
Right.
We have yet to receive that yet.
And that boot camp is coming in August, which is frustrating because it's, it's so far back out and all that stuff.
We understand the boot camp, but we site specific to like the organization that we're representing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Like a full operation, like see people working, put names to these, you know, quantity of employees to it, all this stuff. You know, it wouldn't be reasonable that somebody just say rubber stamps on them.
Yeah. And that's just, I think, my, my question too. It's like, if I, if I don't understand, how can I say, yeah, I approve it? You know, I'm not saying that anything's wrong, but I, you know, it's...
Well, you're free to come in any day of the week and sit, and sit with Nicole, and sit with anybody, and shadow, and that's...
We're asking.
Yeah. Just name, do it.
Here we got the children's center, you got the WES.
Do it anytime.
It's been asked.
You've asked Nicole and what? She said no?
We're working on it. We're getting it hopefully soon.
Okay.
Because, I mean, Claudia just got back from maternity leave this week, okay? So to set up a time to talk with her about general assistance and everything. And right now, since CARES Act funds have stopped, you know, from the federal government coming in, she's getting hit hard, okay?
Yeah.
So, we need to set up a time, an appropriate time, 'cause I know you work during the day on a regular basis, both of you guys do. So we need to set up a time that's gonna be appropriate for both of you guys to come in, that she can meet up and, and talk into stuffs.
Okay.
Um...
Okay, so I do have, uh...
There's one, yeah, go ahead.
Specific.
What page and what?
Uh, page one.
Okay.
Legal services. There's two invoices.
Yeah.
The dates of the invoice look like July 9th, but it's, I'm wondering, what are the two invoices for? What were the dates of servicing? And, uh, yeah, what were the services provided for the 1824-50 and the 164?
Sure.
July 8th, 9th, yeah, July 9th for both of them. So, you know, Jan doesn't use these guys. He's got his own gun, right?
Yeah, Jan is going back.
Check one of the first, find it.
Towards the back. Towards the back?
Here. Maybe the first one or two of them.
There we go. Front end shorts. You're gonna be general rate in your tax rate objections. And then, um...
Which is what he talked about?
Carms. So the tax rate objections for general assistance. And then... Just... Here's everything. You want to look specifically at the description?
Yep. And we're getting like monthly bills on the tax rate, uh, the objections also, with the general assistance? Do you know?
As they come, yeah, I mean, as they come in. I've been asking him because I want to get it over with. It's been going on for quite some time.
Yeah, and it's, uh, I'm curious to see how much we're spending on that as well. On the objections. So it costs us $143.50 to research, um, concerning access to closed meeting minutes. Spending a lot of money here. Come on, take a look at these.
I saw them.
Okay.
Done.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Trustee Elekna?
Aye.
Trustee Volz?
Aye.
Trustee Hacker?
Aye.
Trustee Lucas?
Aye.
Supervisor Prater?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, and then we go to, there's no unfinished business. New business, monthly financial report, that's information only. Okay, and then discussion and vote on litigation pending in the Second District Appellate Court. Goodman versus Hallie, Hacker versus Hallie, Lucas versus Hallie, consolidated under case number 2-210050. Session.
Our, I want our name stricken from the bottom of that document that was sent. You know, I, I want this over.
Name stricken from the bottom of the document.
The one picture I sent, where it said, you know, the election board, the trustees, it, 'cause it's got me suing myself.
But remember, this is the objector's case. This is not the Winfield Township, okay? The board, the...
I, I can't say what I want to say, 'cause it was closed meeting, but it sort of is.
The electoral board is not Winfield Township. Winfield Township has to pay for the electoral board.
Which, if I'm right, we did.
Correct.
Yeah. This is to dismiss, let's dismiss it.
We cannot dismiss it again. It is possible for the court to, like, keep in mind, the objector's case is neither the township nor the electoral board can force this case to be dismissed. So Hallie, being the person, is the only person that can dismiss.
Dismiss it, yes.
Right, okay?
But we cannot contribute anymore, or give aid.
That's, that's...
That's what I'm, that's the wording we want, our lawyer does what we want.
That's what I wanted to say.
To do the wording.
I do not want the township to spend another penny of taxpayers' money on this.
Right, yeah, I think everybody in here understands, we can't dismiss it. We have to, as a township.
It has, the wording has to be correct. That's why I want to, that's, I'm not, the wording has to be correct.
Okay, so how does it work? This is the yellow? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion.
Can I, oh, oh, you're reading it?
Yeah. That no further expenses are to be incurred by the township in the following cases currently pending before the Second District Appellate Court of Illinois. A, Goodman versus Hallie, B, Hacker versus Hallie, and C, Lucas versus Hallie, consolidated under case number 2-21-0050.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second it.
There's a motion by Donnie Volz, and there's a seconded by Trustee Judy Lucas. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I just want to point this out, okay? Just want to say it, okay? God forbid it this continues on, all right? If the lawyer comes, if, if the, and I hope this doesn't happen. If the lawyer comes back and the judge says or subpoenas us as the township to say, you have to come back. Our lawyer's gonna come back to us and say, here are the court fees.
If the, if the court...
If the court subpoenas us at a higher level, which I don't, he's...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You understand, if he subpoenas us to come back and he, like, tells Winfield Township lawyer to be there.
Right.
Just consider the fact that...
In an appeal, they cannot, right, they can, I'm sorry.
If they ask for testimony, but I highly, I don't believe that at this point they can ask for testimony.
In an appeal, no new information can be submitted.
Got it. Okay.
So I would say that that would be highly...
Highly, okay. But if, just, grace of God, I've never gone.
Well, then we'll have the car stop bridge when we come to it.
Fair enough. I just wanted to at least put it out there, just in case, 'cause I don't want us to get sued by our own lawyer because we're not paying his bills, you know? God forbid that happens. Um, having said that, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Hacker?
Aye.
Trustee Lucas?
Aye.
Trustee Volz?
Aye.
Trustee Alenka?
Nay.
And Supervisor Prater?
I abstain. Anything that has more Goodman's name on it, I abstain from.
Anything that what?
Anything that has Goodman's name on it, I abstain from, from the case, period. If it's conjoined. Moving on. Discussion of mental health.
Yes, um, mental health, um, mental illness. Sometimes people shy away from the word mental illness, and we shouldn't. Um, I'm a registered nurse. I try to say it as much as I can to normalize it. And actually, both, you know, mental health and physical health is really still health for the whole thing. It's really, you know, two sides. And mental health, it doesn't discriminate. They don't care who you voted for. They don't care what church you go to, if you go to church or not, you know? Um, I personally have lost two nephews to suicide. And I had a third nephew yesterday, was his wake, today was his funeral. He was only 33. And while, um, he did not die from suicide, his depression was a factor in him not being able to manage his diseases. So it was, it affected him in the long run. And mental health, like I said, affects everyone. Women get postpartum depression. If you look on DuPage County Coroner's website, they will tell you that, um, the number of people that have died from suicide in our county from the last so many years. They also talk about, you know, drug addictions. And people that are addicted, it's more often than not, they're trying to self-medicate because they do have, they do have some mental health issues. Um, so, you know, when I was looking at the proclamations, the proclamations actually say that generally, you make a proclamation on something that you don't vote on. And that's just what the, the board is showing, that this is what they're in favor of. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, open up the discussion because next month I do want to submit a proclamation for us to vote on. Um, just that we are, um, you know, that we are, that everyone should be able to have access to mental health services. It should be access to everyone. So I just thought I would talk about it now, so then we can, you know, if there's any decision that we want to make. Um, because like I said, the proclamations are things we don't vote on, so it's not anything that we'd be voting on. It was extremely disappointing that we had gone to the Animo Township and when someone asked, um, you know, how come you returned $200,000? And the supervisor's answer is, well, we spent what we had needed to spend. And there were so many more people out of work, uh, so much more stress on people. And then there were so many people that had a lot of stress just because of the pandemic. So I just wanted to open that up and want to know if anybody has any questions or anybody, anything that they want to add.
Sorry for the loss.
Thank you.
Doesn't help towards for mental, isn't that available to everybody now?
Well, there's such a stigma, that, you know, there is a parity act that was passed with an insurance company stating that you, because a lot of insurance companies historically, I know this from nursing, would offer, you know, good health insurance and very paltry mental health. And, um, so the parity act, it's a federal law, is it state law? You know, and I'm sorry, I don't remember actually if the parity is federal or state. But it states an insurance company doesn't have to offer mental health insurance, uh, coverage. But if they do, it has to be on par with the physical health. So, you know, the same copay, the same deductible, et cetera. So companies can't offer their employees just a little bit and say, yeah, we have mental health, and then when people really use it. So, you know, while it's, it is available, um, I, most people have it on the insurance. I think because of the stigma, um, people don't want to, you know, seek help. They don't want to ask for help. And not everybody has insurance either.
So you want a mental health board?
Well, you know, um, tell me what that would look like.
An additional tax bracket. Totally different levy, totally different board.
I didn't say a board. I said I wanted to have a proclamation because it's something that we're not voting on.
The proclamation that this board agrees that, uh, not...
Because the only way that's gonna happen is if we had, we would have to have a binding referendum for that to happen, which would happen in two years.
But not a proclamation?
Exactly. That's why I'm not saying a board, I'm not saying a tax.
It's a piece of paper, a statement saying that
Yeah.
Winfield Township is in favor of mental health being available to any resident in Winfield Township.
Right.
Now, how they get there, that's a whole nether.
Exactly.
But that's, that's...
That's a whole nether.
But how, it's something how to, yes, ways does do counseling to a certain degree.
Just for children.
Right.
Next, no.
Adults.
For adult and family and, and anger management and a whole bunch of stuff, yeah.
You know, my feeling is if we can have a proclamation and we all agree that this is the vote, the bank that we're gonna vote on, and we all come together on what bank we want to use, well, by all means, we should all be coming together on that everyone has a right for, you know, mental health care. You know, so I, I just want to show a unison, you know, that we are all standing together for all the people that live in Winfield Township. You know, so if anybody, and you know, there's the DuPage County Health Department, and they do it on a sliding scale. So if people don't have insurance, but a lot of times people don't know about a lot of those things, and they don't know how to access it. So like I said, the proclamation, the proclamation, you know, specifically, when I looked up the reason why we're doing proclamations, that you don't have to do it for this reason, but the purpose behind it is for people to vote on what they, for, uh, to vote on the proclamation because that's something that they're not voting on. So I'm not asking for a mental health board. I'm not asking for a tax levy. I'm just saying that it's, everyone should have access to mental health and that we care about mental health. So maybe that means on our website, we can go ahead and put a suicide prevention number on it. We can put a substance abuse. We can put DuPage County Health Department on there. You know, um, I just, I think, you know, if, I don't know.
Let me, I, I'm interested in seeing how you want to write it out, okay?
Right, yeah.
I gotta, I gotta see it.
But, and that's why I wanted to have the decision because I wanted to get some input from people. So when I do write it out, do you have any thoughts on it, Barbara?
I don't see what it's gonna do. So you're, we're just all saying that we think people should have access to mental health, but there's no, nothing backing that up. That's, it's just, we're just saying it.
And that's what, that's what proclamations are for.
Yeah, so we're just saying it.
Yeah.
Okay, and if people are not willing to, if there's stigma, they don't want to go to DuPage County, they don't want to go wherever, what, what would make them come to us if they're worried about a stigma?
Well, you know, it could be, unfortunately, I didn't realize the, um, the one that you had gone to at, uh, the veterans thing was actually the day that I had come back from camping and I missed that. But, you know, what I'm thinking is that when we do go to, um, any kind of, uh, you know, the night out and everything like that.
National.
Right. That, you know, maybe we can get some brochures from the counties. These are available, you know, and it's, it's amazing. A lot of times all it does take is talking to somebody. And if you talk to somebody with an open heart, it's amazing how much people will talk back to you. So when you say, well, what would make people come here? I think it would be just a warm, you know, welcoming, inviting people and for out in the community. And a lot of, you know, as an, as a nurse, I did home health for eight years. And I saw that the, the patients that had a very good, strong network with friends and family are the ones that healed faster. And they healed, I don't want to say better, you know, but, you know, they were more advanced. And the people, you know, we had a lot of seniors that are just home alone and they have no network and nobody, those are the people who will get chronic illnesses and get worse and worse. So sometimes it's just reaching out to somebody and talking to them. And it's amazing just by having an open conversation with someone that they will say something.
People, now they have, but people don't even know where to begin to look.
Right.
And if they get a liter, piece of literature from the township in the mail with, you got a couple of numbers here, all of a sudden this person.
Yes.
They go, I'll give this a try.
Exactly, that's it. Right, so if we put the newsletter out twice a year.
You can't make anybody go do anything you don't want to do, but some, with the number there, all of a sudden, somebody, yeah, reach out for help, so.
There's a, a, a national suicide number that's coming out this year. Actually, I think it's been, um, out already, uh, it was out earlier this year. So no matter what state you're at, unfortunately, it's not like a three-digit number or something like nine one one or four one one or something. But it's just to de-stigmatize things and just let people know, you know, if people know that you, that you're cared about. And even if they're just coming to you for one thing, but you know that you're cared about, it's very easy that they may open up about somebody, something else. So, so what, what kind of stuff would you like to see on it?
Well, the biggest thing, like going to the post, the, uh,
Continue me.
Continue the event thing.
Right, right.
Was informing people of what the, the services that we have, what we have to offer. Giving them, we do have a little printout of everything that we have for general assistance as well as what we do for services, as well as, um, what the assessor does, you know, for veterans, you know, and all that stuff, as well as the age group and all that. Just informing them what they can do and where they can go for things, not just the county, but also, and not just the city, but that other form of government right between.
Right.
So it's just education.
Right, Sean and I, uh, went, we toured Wayne Township. And, oh my goodness, they have a whole robust senior services, a senior center and food bank. And in their senior center, they have rows of all different brochures. They've got everything, like if you need help for, you know, well, the ship program, do we do the ship program? And what the ship program is, um, counseling people on, uh, for Medicare choices that we, that we don't.
We partner with them with their senior program.
Okay.
They should have told you that, Winfield and Wayne Township Senior.
Interesting, because I, I, I don't, well, that's.
They didn't say that?
Yeah, well, you know, well, anyway, but so they have all these brochures and they have brochures on caregivers. And if you, you know, you want help in your home from, you know, any mental health, you know, from, so there's so many things. It's sometimes it's just putting up that information out there and people may pick something up and they may, they may not ever use it. But then it might be sitting on their desk for six months and then they may pick it up.
Because we were curious why they wanted the bus to go there and we saw why they wanted the bus to go there.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah. Yeah. So what, what the thing is, is only you said that, um, we partner with that and that's something that we can kind of talk, uh, later, you know, after the meeting. But, um, the woman that is.
Juanita?
I don't remember. It wasn't Juanita, she wasn't there, it was the person who was touring the senior center, yeah. She stated that they're only allowing Wayne Township, um, seniors now to join. And it's only that because there's always so many people that want to join and the, the ones that were in there already, they're letting them stay.
Grandfather.
Right, but the new ones are not. So when you said, uh, partner, that's something I guess we can always talk about later. Because I, I kind, I had heard rumors that there's a partner, but I don't know if it's fifty-fifty and, you know, if we contribute or, or what we do. You know, so, yeah, so that's, you know.
They said they did a lot of that with grants. Do we write grants? Do we receive grants?
State of Illinois, yes.
Is other columns in the budget then?
Expecting to get some, I'm talking to Katrina.
Okay.
There's some that we're expected to get, um, trust me, prior to me. So I'm looking at how that money is coming in.
So that's, you know, that's kind of, that, that was my talk. And like I said, I, I wanted to discuss it first before I write up a proclamation, just to get feedback, you know? So if anybody, um, I'll give you my card. I have cards now if anybody wants to call me. You know, and, and give me some input on, on what they, you know, want to add or what they'd like to see. I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
I'll shoot you an email.
So, yeah. I haven't, uh, written a proclamation before, so, you know, I, I, I can't tell you what it's gonna look like. But like I said, that, that's the, when I read, that's the purpose of a proclamation, it's something that we're not voting on and just to let us, you know? And I just think it would be a really good way to reach out to the community, you know? Even if they read that, you know, um, if there's like a little blurb in the newspaper and they read that, you never know who that can reach.
Got it.
So, so that's, that's all I have to say on that.
Moving on, ongoing business. I don't have any, um, department reports. Obviously, John's on vacation, Mark is gone as well. For me, um, the bus, uh, from Roger Page in July or June, I'm sorry. We have, uh, four rides, two riders. On our bus in June, we had sixty-three riders, eighty-five stops. The bus right now is getting fixed. Uh, there was some siding that we had, we wanted to get repaired. And then, um, last weekend, thank God, no one was on the bus except for Steve, but a car, piece of plywood hit the bus, so, um, there was a little accident, but that's gonna get checked out. So right now, the bus for this week is getting repaired and getting a quote on that, so. Steve's fine, he's okay, there's nothing wrong with him. Other than that, like I said, Claudia's back, um, Bessie's doing great, I don't think, do you have any complaints?
Nope.
Yeah.
Great place to work.
Great, excellent.
Is there, is there beyond the bus, like? Is, could we have like a report of what else we do?
What else I do, other than general assistance?
Oh, like how many people we came in, we helped do this, or we helped do this forum or something like that?
Like the number of people that came in for general assistance?
Yeah, or the number of people that came in and we helped them, you know, fill out some forms that they got some benefit that they.
I, that would be, to me, a confidentiality situation.
Not the number of people, just the number, nothing confidential.
I can, I can ask Claudia, tell her, yeah, that's fine, I can ask her.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Because if, if, if we really want to, you know, survive and say this is what we do, then it should be all in the sunlight, we should be telling people what we do.
That's me, that's me, that's me. I should be telling people, me, okay? That's me, general assistance is me.
Okay.
Assessing is Mark.
Yes.
Right.
Highway commission is John.
So could you bring that information to the board?
I could.
Will you?
I could.
Will you?
I'll look into it.
Okay, because I, I just think that, you know, it will help. You know, especially when I see that, you know, that, that all this money is going, thousands of dollars we're paying to go for the lawyer for these people that are the tax object, tax objectors. And we're not getting any information about what's going on. You know, I, I think it would be valuable for us to, to find out exactly what's going on. How many people did we help? Because, you know, sometimes when you help people, you're not giving them money. Sometimes you're directing them to
Right.
Meals on Wheels or the VA, you know? So I think just the number of people that we're helping will, will, I think, count immensely.
If we're not tooting our own horn, who's tuning it for us? And, you know, we're going to these meetings, we're contributing money to make sure Township, Township survive. So, you know, if we're doing good, we should announce it.
How many walk-ins have you had since COVID?
Not very many, it's all on appointment, honestly. So, um, that's another thing, you know, it's literally all on appointment. Like I said, Claudia coming back in, getting in it, getting phone calls about, you know, it's mostly talking and discussing that.
Yeah.
Putting them in the right direction, so I can, I'll talk with her and discuss with her on that, yeah.
And it's not only just for our benefit, I think it's for everyone in the township. Now, this meeting wasn't videotaped this time, how come?
Well, the videotape guy is not here and I don't know how to do it. Barb, you know how to do it?
I don't.
Betsy, you know how to, I don't know how to do that.
Does anybody know, can you put just an audio recording on YouTube if it's not a video?
I have no idea.
That's a very good question for the clerk.
Yeah, just because I, I think these are things that, that, you know, taxpayers want to know. They want to know where all the money's going and, you know, they're.
Why don't, why don't we go to, uh, comments for elected officials?
Okay.
Donnie?
I just, the citizens that were here, I think they're gonna find out, they're gonna have an uphill battle. Because I went through this stuff years ago when my kids were little, about traffic in the subdivision, everything like that. I know the first person that's gonna look into it is gonna be our road commissioner. And then the county's gonna get involved. And then they're gonna do a study and then they're gonna want to know, what's the traffic level, is it in the morning and afternoon? Everybody's going to work, what's traffic like in the middle of the day? And if there's no traffic in the middle of the day, there's nothing gonna be done. I mean, because that's basically what I was told, my kids being little and I'm on dead end streets and the bus comes this way and every, all the kids came this way. You know, it, it was, it was a mess. It was the same thing they're going through, had little kids. So, I mean, it, it's, I don't mean to joust, you know, I don't know, you, it's gonna, it's, that's, that's gonna be up to his discretion, whatever happens there. You know, but they at least started at a place. And when they brought up the unincorporated, I don't think, I, I, I don't know too much about that, but I know you have to be, because I'm in an unincorporated area too. And you have to be surrounded by a municipality three quarters, three times around. They got a forest preserve right across the street from you. It's not gonna happen. And you got, uh, one, two, I think you got, and if it would be, that would be something that you guys would probably have to talk to Winfield. There's been rumors about. Yeah, I've had rumors of where I live too. I live over by the BFW and there's been rumors, I've been over almost third, well, eighty-five. So we get rumors like every other year, okay, we're gonna have water, we've got water coming through. Oh, really? This used to be. So I, I, I mean, at least they got, they came here, they got a start and, you know, wish them good luck and everything. If nothing else, get a couple of speak, you know, maybe, oh, I mean, I, I don't know what else is gonna happen, but I know once, once, once the study starts, they're gonna say, yeah, it's busy in the morning and afternoon, okay, good luck. You know, you talk about the park there on the corner there, right, the new one, right? The little one, yeah. Yeah, so. It'll be interesting, you know, but they came, you know, you gotta start someplace. You know, they wanted to take the James Street light away from us and I started at the school board. So the light stayed, so. But that's about all I get, nothing really going on. Oh, National Light Out, right? Yeah, we got that coming up.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, all right.
Trustee Hacker?
I'm looking forward to our tour, so I can see the whole machine in operation, you know, it'd be crazy.
Send me some dates, man, and times.
Yeah, and, uh, I understand what they're saying with the, the children and the streets. The cars are getting quieter, there's a few deaf children and they really have hearing dis, you know, I almost saw them get hit twice. So the streets are only like eleven feet wide at one spot, there's nowhere for you to go when the car comes flying by. So. I hear them and that's what I think we need to do, you know, we need to hear. It's, it's easy to say no. It's easy to say no. We need to listen and help.
But we also need to know where our jurisdiction is. Right?
Then we need to find a way to help.
Exactly. So find, know where our jurisdiction is and know where to point them in the right direction to get where they need to go. Whether that's Sheila Rutledge being, or, or, uh, Jim, uh, Zay or whatever, which would be your county board members to get in there and.
What about the police department? I think nobody's mentioning that.
The county sheriff, the sheriff.
Chicago Police Department.
So when you call for issues like that, it's a little bit like the difference between if you're going to your doctor or an urgent care. Yeah, if you're understanding it all, your doctor knows your history and the whole backstory. The sheriff's department, it's a new person all the time and you have to explain the process all over again, so.
And if they're unincorporated, I don't think, can the West Chicago Police, they don't have it.
Well, sheriff, sheriff.
Sheriff.
Yeah.
So it would have to be a sheriff, yeah.
But they got so many calls, you know, and I mean, at that point, John, I believe he has a, uh, I'm not gonna speak for him, but I believe he has a, a speed dominer. Thing that he can put up, but I seen.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know how far he.
They're going in the right direction.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then we can be behind there, holding their hands, saying we got our back as they go to Jim Zay or they go to Sheila Rutledge.
Exactly, right.
That's what we need to do, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to say that I thought it was great that we had people from the community, you know, come and, uh, yeah, it is a difficult thing on this side when you want to say something or ask and we can't. You know, so I think it's even good that you'd said that because I don't know the people who come here necessarily know that, and they're just thinking we're looking at them likely or not, we just can't see anything. So, um, and I understand, just like Don said, yeah, they'll have to do studies and it'll take a while and, but hopefully, hopefully they can get that result. You know, even if they can, you know, whether they, even if it's a children at play sign or stop sign would be great, but. Um, so I, my other comments, I just want to, you know, say hi to Barb in person, hello? Because I was on the phone last time and, and I, I think I've met the rest of you guys before. Yeah, so, uh, I'm honored to work with you guys. I, I think we need to, um, I don't know if you are aware of this, Nicole, but, uh, Steve Adams, McAdams, whatever his name is. He was on, uh, when Bruce Rutter was governor, he was on the task force when Bruce Rutter wanted to dissolve townships.
Okay.
And that attorney, so if, I'm kind of like, you know, it's, uh, I don't know what his part was, you know, and everything, but it's, um, I don't know. Is he, you know, I don't, I don't know if he was for, if, if the attorney personally was for dissolving, uh, the townships, you know, but, you know.
Defending him or what?
Was he, yeah, but it's kind of like if he's our attorney, I think that's almost kind of, it'd be interesting to see where he stands on it. I don't know if he's written any, any articles or anything on it, but I, you know.
You can ask him.
Yeah, but, you know, there, there has been a lot of talk about that, especially at this level downstate and a little bit more in the color counties. So that's why I think that we need to let people know what we're doing. And that's why I'm for, um, videotaping every movie, I mean, I mean, every meeting and put it up on the YouTube. I'm for transparency and for us finding out how many general assistants that we're spending. Because, you know, people, people kind of need, that we're helping people need to know that. So, oh, the other thing, I was on the webpage. And if you go just on the first page, which is, uh, the welcome page, it's talking about our audit reports in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. It's talking about the, um, recycling in September of twenty twenty. And there's a few other out of date things down there. And I think that maybe it just needs to be updated a little bit. Um, and there actually, actually, there is, I'm, I'm, what am I thinking? There is something that I do want to talk about and it's something that I'm really kind of not pleased with. Back in May, I asked Nicole, I told Nicole that I'd like to look into having a COVID vaccine clinic. And Nicole's like, okay, well, you know, get me this information. And then I got an email from Nicole January, um, June second stating that it's not going to be on the agenda because there's, it's places for people to go and it's not gonna be on the agenda. Which I thought, is that really the supervisor's job to say what is going to be on the agenda and what is not gonna be on the agenda? And so I replied to that and I said, no, you know what? I've talked to Sean Hacker, he's in agreement as well. This needs to be on the agenda. So, well, you know. So, wow, you know, I get my packet for the June meeting and I open it up, sure it's on the agenda, but every item, except for the vaccine clinic, said was to vote. So every item was tied taking a vote, but when it came to the vaccine clinic, there was no vote on it. So you tied my hands. So even though I had to say to you, really, shouldn't the board members be voting on this? You reluctantly put it on the agenda, and then you did not give us the option to vote on it. So I was prepared to, to make a presentation. I was prepared to come back from camp to the meeting, but when I saw that you did that, which it's not your place to do that.
Yes, it is, because number one, you asked for it, I did not get an email from Sean at all asking to have that on the agenda.
But that's fine, but you told me, Judy, you know what, if you want anything, tell me, I'll put it on.
You said you wanted to discuss it.
No, no, no.
You said you wanted a discussion, I put a discussion on there.
It, there was a meet, there was a question at the meeting, how many people do we need to get something to put on the agenda? And you said to me, Judy, if you want it, if you want it, tell me, I'll put it on there. And I know you did, and you know you did too.
I said, if a trustee wants something on there, yes, but if there's a discussion going on and I, I deem that it's not going to be appropriate to have on the agenda, I'm not going to put it on the agenda.
That's the whole point, how can you deem whether it's appropriate or not to put on the agenda?
Didn't we talk about this, about the vaccines?
We talked about it and we all said no. No, 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 there was no vote on it because we couldn't do it, and that's not, you said you'd be open to it, because what I.
I never said that.
Listen to the tape.
I never said I'd be open. Don't point at me. I never said.
This is my pen.
I never said I'd be open to it, I said you can go to CBS, you can go to Walgreens, you can go anywhere to get a vaccine.
So, so what I said is I'll contact the county and then I'll report back, and then this month you didn't even put it on there. So I just want to say that already in July, not even counting June, and I asked you back in May, the DuPage County Health Department has had two COVID vaccine clinics in West Chicago in July. How great would it have been if we could have sponsored that? Or we could have been out there and saying, you know what, I'm your Winfield Township representative and thanks for coming and getting your vaccine. So at this point, and listen to it, listen to the tape, you said you are open to hearing about it. I didn't say that you were open to have it, you said you were open to hearing about it. So I just, just want to say that for you to do that, and then even when I said it on last week's, month's meeting, if you listen to it, I said I'll report it, you don't even have that on the agenda for me to do the reporting. So at this point, I'm going to forget it. I'll volunteer, you know, you and, I know how to organize people and I'm involved with a lot of different organizations, and I will help that way. But when we talked in May and you were reluctant to put it on, and I'm, I couldn't figure, I kept saying, you know, Nicole, why don't you want to put this on the agenda? And I said, Nicole, I'm going to do the work for you, I'll get everything done, I'll organize it, I'll get the people to attend, I'll knock door to door with people to get people to sign up, and you, you start, you say, Judy, I'm crying, I'm crying because, but these are tears of happiness.
If you give me the information and proof that you're going to be doing this, I need, I need the paperwork, Judy, I can't just go on words.
Of course I have the paperwork.
I, you didn't send me anything, you sent me nothing.
Because you didn't have it on the agenda.
So why would, why would I put it on the agenda if I don't have the paperwork to send all my trustees?
When you.
So, are you done with your elected officials?
I'm not, so when you said, I'm crying because nobody's offered to help, and I said to you, but Nicole, we're all in this together. I said, I don't think that a trustee's job starts and ends with a board meeting. So I just want to tell you that even after that whole thing about you crying because I'm willing to help you, and this is like twice that you didn't even have it on the agenda, so I'm dropping the vaccine. But again, when people say eliminate this level of, of government, remember that I've been trying to push things.
Okay, noted.
Okay. Trustee Elekna?
I'd like to welcome our general assistance, Guru, back.
Yes.
I'm happy that she's back, I'm happy that everything went well with the baby, and I'm sure you guys are happy to have her back, so, you move forward.
Excellent. Hearing nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn from trustee Volt, seconded by trustee Elekna? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion adjourned at, or adjourned at 7:54 PM.